Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, thank you all for coming today to our meeting. I would like to also extend a big thank you to Livingston Parish for housing our meeting, this wonderful establishment. And I would like to thank all of our stakeholders, our local leaders, for their continued support of the Amiet River Basin. Um, just a little housekeeping, if everybody could, including myself, mute your phones. And Commissioners, if you hadn't put in your batteries in your mics, insert your batteries into your mics, and when you speak, make sure your mic's on and speak into the microphone. All right, uh, if we could go ahead and get started. Also, Ms. Brenne Felido, can you lead us in the pledge?
Uh, Ms. Toni, can you do a roll call for us, please? Present.
If we have any public comments, please register with Ms. Toni, and there'll be a chance to hear your official comments at the end of our meeting, but of course, after every action item, we encourage your input. Commissioners, have you looked at your, um, meeting minutes? Uh, reviewed those meeting minutes? And if you have no objections or questions, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept them as written. Uh, motion by Commissioner Parker, second by Commissioner Harris. Any opposition? Hearing none, minutes are adopted as written. Next is approval of our financial statements. They should be included in your packet. Hopefully, if you had a chance to take a look at those before the meeting. And do we have any public comments on our financial statements? Commissioner Lionel, how's our financial? Good shape. We just had a few more dollars coming in. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the financial statements as written. Uh, I got a motion by Commissioner Bailey and second by Commissioner, um, Parker. Any opposition? Hearing none, financial statements are adopted. Okay, so, um, Ms. Toni, can you explain what that's about on our agenda? Speaking to your mic.
June's corrected statements was just a, um, a date error by our CPA, and when it was called, we needed to just correct.
Okay, so, nothing significant, looks like a clerical mistake on the date. So, can I have a motion to accept those as corrected? Uh, first by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Parker. Any opposition? Hearing none, accepted. All right, uh, moving on along on our agenda, our next, um, item is a report by our ARBC Executive Director, Mr. Paul Sawyer. Paul? It might, it might take just a second.
About now.
Very good.
Good, all right, thank you. Uh, good morning Commissioners. The first item of business, the Upper Amiet Restoration Project, Upper Amiet Restoration Project, uh, we have executed the purchase agreement with the, with the sellers. Upon approval of resolutions today of 1129, I mean, excuse me, 1192 and, um, 1193, and also 1190, we will begin our due diligence, uh, this week. Just for the sake of, uh, of getting ahead of that schedule, Amendment Number One, 1190, is, uh, Resolution 1190, it's just a correction, it's just a technical correction. The, uh, the name of the, uh, of the vendor conducting the work that was previously authorized does business under another name. So it's the same company, it does business under another name, and for the sake of clarity, we wanted to, uh, be very specific about, uh, with whom, uh, you have authorized work. On Resolution 1192, we are engaging with, or upon approval, we will engage with a firm to conduct environmental. You have received, uh, previously, a version of their proposal. That proposal is, has been since, uh, under revision, which is under revision right now to help achieve cost savings. Commissioner Bailey examined the proposal, identified opportunities for cost savings. President Clark and I, uh, met with over the phone the, uh, the vendor, and, uh, they are revising that proposal, which, uh, which again, will achieve, uh, at least 30% or more cost savings. And then Resolution 1193 is just a formality, it's an affirmation by this body that we have matching funds for our capital outlay earmark, or capital outlay allocation, I should say more correctly. Uh, it is a formality, but one that the Facility Planning and Control needs on their records, that we acknowledge our fiscal responsibility. Back to, uh, Upper Amiet Restoration, we will, upon approval of resolutions, we will commence with due diligence this week. We have 100-day, 120-day window in which to complete this. We fully intend to compress that timeframe, uh, however, because we are following the rules and guidelines of the State of Louisiana's, uh, capital outlay programs, we have to be sure that we are absolutely complying with their, uh, their guidelines, their rules, and so we're budgeting more time to accommodate that, but, but everything within our control, we fully expect to compress that timeline. Regarding capital outlay, item number two for me is, uh, capital outlay. As you know, we have $2 million allocation that was, uh, awarded in this previous, this most recent capital outlay. It's $2 million in Priority Two. We are, uh, working with Senate Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Committee Chairman Franklin Foil to coordinate with the State Bond Commission to elevate that Priority Two allocation to a cash, Priority One, a cash allocation. We'll report on that as soon as those meetings, uh, occur, and we do expect to be before the State Bond Commission sometime this fall, September, October timeframe. President Clark and I are arranging a meeting with Commissioner of Administration Taylor Barra and, uh, and his Deputy Commissioner Patrick Goldsmith to talk about the, the allocation and ensure that we are getting this allocation elevated to Priority One, but then also to get ahead for next year's capital outlay process, uh, as well as to discuss potential revenue streams for the Amiet River Basin Commission to conduct our operations and to broaden the scope of our operations. Commissioners, this past month, I have, uh, participated in meetings with the Corps of Engineers and other stakeholders on the Comete River Diversion Canal, uh, the, the East Baton Rouge Parish Flood Control Project, also known as the Five Bayous Project in East Baton Rouge Parish. I've, uh, had the opportunity to meet with Commissioners one-on-one, and will continue to reach out and, and schedule opportunities to meet with each of you, uh, to check in as a regular, uh, routine occurrence. I've conducted, uh, very informal meetings with stakeholders along the Amiet River, uh, to explore opportunities to, um, uh, expand our restoration efforts. Uh, once we acquire this, this, this property, uh, we will want to, uh, begin restoration efforts, uh, as soon as possible, so we're looking at ways, uh, President Clark and I are, are meeting with, uh, environmental firms and with the state to explore ways to, um, to begin those restoration efforts. Commissioners, I have, uh, met, participated in a call, thank you, Commissioner Harold, participated in a call this morning on an LWI project specifically for Taylor Bayou to, uh, to, to get a status of that particular project. And the reason I bring that up is, as I've mentioned to the Commission before, uh, I, which means ARBC, has limited, very limited visibility on all of the LWI projects in our region. We are the regional coordinator, we should have proficient knowledge and awareness of all of the projects. Uh, in fact, I think it's incumbent upon us to help de-conflict some of the projects that are hung up. Uh, it's, it's, these are, these are projects in our basin, uh, they affect everyone in our basin, all seven parishes in our basin, and so, uh, I bring this up, thank you again, Commissioner Harold, for, uh, inviting me to participate in that. There are over 40 projects in the Amiet River Basin that are LWI projects, and I'm, I'm going to hit them one by one, and will continue to report to you. Uh, I'm also endeavoring to have the Office of Community Development come, present, and give regular reports to the Commission, uh, in the, in the event that I am unable to participate in all of these various project calls. Regarding the Comete River Diversion Canal, you have a packet, uh, you have a summary in your packet, I think the highlights are, are this, of the 13 areas of the Comete River Diversion Canal, so the whole canal broken up into segments, of the, of the 13 areas, seven of those areas are 95% complete. So that, that can mean channel excavation, that can mean clearing and snagging, um, it can mean bridge construction, uh, it, it includes a number of different things, but seven of the 13 are 95% complete, so substantially complete. One of those projec, or a sixth, or excuse me, an eighth project is 70% complete, so more than half of the Comete River Diversion Canal project is, is nearing completion. However, as I've mentioned, as I've reported before, the, uh, the Corps is letting, has attempted to let the final five contracts this year, and, uh, of those contracts, these will, these will be the final five, and of these contracts, uh, one is Channel Reach, what's called Channel Reach 2B, and, and we will, uh, I provided you, uh, a one-page illustration of what the map looks like and where these projects, uh, the status of each one of these projects on this one pager. This one pager, by the way, will be available to the public, we, we just got our hands on it this morning, and so we're going to share it with the public. But, uh, what's, what we call Channel Reach 2B, that's between Highway 19 and Highway 960, uh, 964, and, uh, that, that, uh, award is contingent upon completing, uh, utility relocations. This is one of those areas that we've, we've talked about this many, many times, one of those areas where Florida Gas, the Florida Gas Pipeline has conflicted with the alignment of the Comete River Diversion Canal. That is getting de-conflicted right now, and, uh, and the Corps expects to award that, uh, that contract before the end of the year. It's contingent upon, uh, completing the, uh, the agreement with, uh, with the state, with DOTD and, and, uh, Florida Gas Pipeline. Another, uh, of the, of the remaining five is what's called Channel Reach Three. Uh, that's Highway 19 to the McHugh Road Bridge, and so that's a section on either side, east and west side of Highway 19, which is the highway that connects, uh, the City of Baker to the City of Zachary. Uh, that area has been, uh, conflicted with the, uh, the pipeline has conflicted with the alignment of the Comete Diversion, uh, project. That, uh, that, uh, that, uh, the Corps had advertised for that, uh, that segment in June. Uh, I don't have word yet if that's been awarded. Commissioner Marino may want to pipe in, uh, after my report. Lastly, uh, or last few things, Baton Rouge Bayou, uh, that's a, a structure to allow Baton Rouge Bayou to flow into the Comete River Diversion, uh, Canal. Uh, that contract was awarded in May. The last two big pieces of the canal, the bookends of the canal, the, the Comete Diversion Control Structure, which allows the Comete River to come into the canal, and then also the Brooks Lake Closure, which allows the water to get into the Mississippi River. Those two bookends have, uh, are, are awaiting final, uh, work, but we expect that the, uh, these contracts will be let in the next, well, the, uh, Brooks Lake Closure should be let, uh, before the end of this year. Uh, they are working on rights of entry and, and working with Florida Gas as well as the, uh, State Police to get rights of entry to finalize alignment and, uh, and, and, uh, subsequently to award that contract. And then, uh, and then the, uh, diversion structure, that advertisement occurred on May 25th. Uh, I won't go much more into this, but just suffice it that the, uh, the State of Louisiana DOTD has been responsible for, uh, property acquisition. Uh, they've completed 85 out of 89 of those parcels. Uh, that, most of those parcels are at the Brooks Lake Closure, that bookend that I just talked about. They are also exploring, uh, temporary parcels along the, uh, three bayous, Whites Bayou, Cypress Bayou, and Baton Rouge Bayou for clearing and snagging, staging for debris during, uh, for clearing and snagging. But of the three bridges that they are responsible for, the Highway 964 Bridge is complete. Uh, the Highway 67 Plank Road Bridge is complete. The Highway 19 Bridge is, uh, is really just underway, a bypass road has been completed. Um, test piles are taking place right now adjacent to the bridge, and they expect to start driving piles by the end of this year. That concludes my report on the Comete River Diversion Canal, uh, and I will add, uh, as quickly as possible, the East Baton Rouge Parish Flood Control Project, the Five Bayous Project, essentially broken up into two segments, one of the northern bayous in East Baton Rouge Parish, Beaver Bayou and Blackwater Bayou, as well as the three bayous in the south, uh, Bayou Fountain, Wards Creek, Jones Creek, and the, uh, the southern bayous move along much more quickly, they are largely clearing and snagging operations. The Beaver Bayou and Blackwater Bayou require more engineering because there's, uh, work that's going to be done in those channels, but, um, the, uh, the southern bayous, Jones Creek, Bayou Fountain, and Wards Creek, uh, those are, I would say, 50% complete, and, uh, the remaining operations there are largely clearing and snagging, that they're, uh, they're coordinating with, uh, East Baton Rouge Parish. Lastly, Commissioners, uh, in terms of, uh, what I would characterize as external communications, uh, we are working to modify our website, not an overhaul, but modify our website with the full intention of creating greater facility for people to participate, greater facility for people to, uh, provide comments, to, uh, share ideas, as well as to, uh, be able to contact us more easily than, uh, than right now. As we make modifications or as we propose modifications, we will share those with you before they go live, but we're not proposing any, anything major. Uh, we also want to have more resources available for, for, uh, citizens to view, and, uh, and then, as you have seen, we have started sending out a newsletter, which is intended to be a touch point to invite people to participate in the conversation, to invite people to come to our website, to view the resources that we have, particularly on the master plan, as well as other projects that we are working on. And so, uh, we will continue in those efforts. Commissioners, that concludes, I will say, lastly, uh, I, uh, took, uh, a week or so of, of personal privilege in July. I participate, I really appreciate the outreach and, um, and accommodation during that time, so, um, thank you. That concludes my report unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions? All right, uh, just one question, Paul, just clarification. Um, wanna, I think it's a great idea for us to, to work with our local parishes on the LWI projects, the 40 projects, because yes, we are the regional coordinator, and we do have a exceptional, uh, skill set sitting here on this board, that we work together, and we don't want anybody to fall down, and if they do, we want to be able to pick them up and keep it going. Uh, I commend you for that, and I look forward to, we all look forward to working with you on that. Uh, also, Taylor Bayou, um, who's the local sponsor and where's that project located?
City of Walker.
City of Walker, okay, all right. Um, one last thing, the newsletter that you mentioned, I think that's a great idea, and by the way, the website, um, looked at the website, and it's very user-friendly. Uh, it's not over-cluttered, uh, it's just straightforward. Um, but in regards to the newsletter, how would, how would people get on the list, uh, to get subscriptions, or how does that work? The local parishes, the municipalities, the individuals, how, how does that work?
Uh, thank you, I'm, I'm really glad you've asked that. So what we have been saying for, uh, well, since we released the master plan, we have been encouraging people, go to our website and contact us, there's a contact, uh, feature on our website, and that has been the way that we've generated, uh, some of our lists. I have gone out and tried personally to try to build the list, uh, piece by piece, and tried to find, uh, email addresses, and, and we're still doing that, we're still doing that. One of the, uh, one of the aspects of the, the website that, that we want to change is to create the ability, a very, very easy way for citizens to sign up for the newsletter. So maybe you go to the website, pops up right there, sign, put your email in, and then, and then boom, you're automatically, uh, you're automatically in, in the newsletter. Until we make that refinement, I'm grabbing as many emails, uh, that I can, and, and adding them to the list, and continue to invite the public to contact us, to give us their email addresses, so that we can, we can include as many people as possible, and, and we have, uh, we have about 200 people on the, on the list right now, there are approximately 800,000 people in the, uh, in the, in the basin, and so we have a long way to go.
Thank you. Uh, maybe just at bare minimum, uh, the parishes, you know, at least until, as the other ones populate the list, but, you know, get the parishes on there to where they're represented, that would be good. Thank you. Any, any other comments, questions? Thank you very much, Paul. Next item on our agenda is a report from our legal counsel, Mr. Larry Bangston. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of things. Paul had gone over the, um, beginning of the due diligence period, uh, with the, uh, potential purchase of the property in the, what we refer to as the St. Helena property. Uh, we've been working with the Division of Administration, they have some very specific rules and requirements of what the language has to be, uh, in any, uh, act of sale. Uh, we have worked with the seller's attorney to revise the documents to ensure that the, um, purchase and sales agreement and the, uh, sample, uh, cash sale would be acceptable to the state, and we have been able to get that confirmation. Uh, the second item that, uh, I have been, uh, working with staff, with Paul and Toni, is there has been a extensive public records request concerning the master plan, and we have, uh, responded with that, and that information has been provided to, uh, the individual that made the request. It's my understanding, um, that all that information that has been provided, uh, has been now posted, uh, and available for the public to review. Uh, as it relates to the public records request, that was a substantial amount of, uh, effort and work to put it together, but for the most part, it's very, uh, kind of dovetails into what Paul had talked about. Much of the information that was requested is actually, uh, published and found on our website now concerning, uh, budgets, concerning audits, and all of that information, uh, is pretty much available, uh, for, uh, the public to review. So, um, if people are interested in trying to understand more about the, um, master plan or the financial aspects of the Commission, much of that information is available directly onto the website.
I just want to say the, you know, not to beat on this, but the public records request, uh, was honored, but it was quite a heavy lift. Uh, I think to the tune of about a, a terabyte, if you don't know what that is, that's about 1,000 gigabytes, that's a lot of information. But anyway, thank you, Larry, for handling up on that. Okay, next item on our agenda is under Old Business, and, um, I don't know, let's see. We have a presentation by St. James Parish. You guys have an idea how long the presentation might take, Rick? Okay, all right, I guess, all right, we're, we're ready, if y'all are ready. So we have a, we have a presentation, a report by St. James Parish, um, it's, they're going to provide a update on the status of the West Shore Connection Connector Levy Project. Uh, just, just to put things into perspective, the content into context, um, this is one of our, our regional projects that was, uh, we approved by the Board, um, it's transformative. A lot of people don't know, you know, St. James is often forgot about, they're down at the bottom, they're sandwiched in between Lake Ponchatrain, and they're sandwiched in between the Mississippi River Levy, and a lot of times they get to squeeze, and so hence the project, um, a lot of great partners that you all have working together, has been on this with the Corps, the Ponchatrain Levy District, and now the ARBC and, and you guys, and I, we're, we're glad to hear what y'all got going on.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you an overview of our project. So, uh, their engineering record for it is, is Intercoastal Consultants, Kevin O'Gorman and Kevin Byron, they're going to come up here in just a minute and give you the engineering perspective on what this project looks like, but if you guys could hear me just for a minute, uh, I'd like to illustrate something that's really critical to making this project successful, and that's my staff and the role that they play in making this happen. First, I'd like to introduce Ryan LaRuce, he's my Assistant Director, and what Ryan does is that we take the scope of work from our parish president, and we turn it in, uh, you know, we, we develop the scope of work because it forms the foundation for everything else that we do moving forward. Uh, he does all of our bid documentation, he makes sure that our bid documentation is in accordance with, uh, with the grant origination documents, uh, he does all of our bid advertising and, and our local official journal and online, uh, he does all of bid openings and awards, uh, he schedules all of our pre-construction conferences, and the issues, the notices to proceed, but what's important about what he does is that it, it forms all the elements of a legal and binding contract, that has to be there upfront, so it's very critical to what he does. Next is our grant administrator, which is Blake Rusell, very important, he does all of our intergovernmental agreements, he makes sure that that gets executed with all of the state and federal partners that we do, he makes sure we, we comply with all the doctrine of every grant, and makes sure that all of our special conditions are adhered to. Uh, he coordinates with all of our state and federal partners like OCD, uh, FPNC, uh, DOTD, and everybody else that we deal with, whether it's state or federal, and in addition to that, he manages all of our capital outlay requests, he takes all scopes of work that we get, he gets from Ryan, puts them in the E-Coords, and he makes sure that he, he tracks that through the legislative session, so he manages all of that through grant closeout. So he manages all of that through grant closeout. Lindsay Zabinski, she's our managerial accountant. It's, she's not part of the finance, but it's part of, part of operation. It's different than financial accounting because she's project driven, all of our documents are project driven. She has one spreadsheet that splits hairs. I mean, it's done by project, it's done by engineering firm, it's done by task orders, it's done by reimbursement request because we got to be able to watch all the balls bounce to make sure that we push these projects through. Super important for what she does. And she manages all of our budgets. And last but not least is Erin Emo. She's my executive assistant. In addition to that, she's the administrative assistants for Public Works. She handles all force account, labor, equipment and material. And she does all accounts receivable and accounts payable. So again, if you ever see these pictures at the end of a project or beginning of a project where you've got golden shovels and big scissors, if this doesn't happen, that picture never gets taken. Rarely seen by the public, I want to give them a shout out that they, I appreciate what they do. But it's super important and thank our boss for trusting us enough to do our job. Other than being subject to your questions, I'll turn it over to Intercoastal.
Very good. Be just a minute while he's pulling up this presentation. A lot of times these computers take a little while to boot up and get with the wifi and everything. But all right, looking good.
All right. Thank you for the, for taking that time, Rick, to acknowledge all the stuff that's worked on this. Certainly worked very closely with them on all, you know, my involvement throughout these projects with St. James. I'll given a presentation, I think probably about a year ago and, and was, was asked to kind of give a status update on where we're at. Given, you know, as President Clark mentioned, this is one of the four projects that, you know, was, was included as far, as far as the, as far as the regional allocation. I'm going to just give a little bit of background on the, on the West Shore Lake Ponchatrain project. I'll be very brief on that. The Connector Levy Project and funding and feasibility. A big step for us over the past 12 months or so was making the Connector Levy part of West Shore Lake Ponchatrain and St. James. So I'm going to kind of talk through some of the steps that we've, we've gone through to make that a reality. The project funding and phasing and then a status update on the Connector Levy, which is what we call Phase One. And then the M2 East Pump Station and Drainage Structure, which is, which is Phase Two. And that's where the Amy River Basin Commission and the LWI funding comes in. So this is the overall West Shore Lake Ponchatrain Project. It has the, the St. John portion there on the right, St. James on the, on the left. Those are the authorized features. Your executive director is intimately familiar with this one as far as getting the, the appropriation for the project of $760 million and getting that thing off the ground. For St. James, the original authorization included $45 million for some ring levees and flap gates along 3125. But post IDA, there was a supplemental, there was additional appropriation from the Disaster Recovery Act that gave an additional $450 million towards West Shore. Important part about that is that it opened up the opportunity to look at additional alternatives in St. James beyond what was initially authorized. The reason this is needed and as was mentioned, you know, you're kind of getting it from two directions. You've got the coastal storm surge coming from Lake Morpaw, Lake Ponchatrain area and as well as, you know, being subjected to the riverine flooding. And you also have these, you know, either active or planned levy systems that kind of leave St. James as one of the areas that's going to be exposed without a, a comprehensive plan for flood risk reduction. So little background on the, the funding and feasibility. It started out with the parish not seeing the, the authorized features as something that was long-term and sustainable for providing, you know, the future target protection for the, or risk reduction for the future target years, you know, looking out 50 years into the future. So what they identified as a key element of that was connecting the two ring levy features, which we've been calling the, the West Shore Connector Levy. They were successful in getting some capital outlay funding in 2022 and initiated alternatives analysis and H&amp;H analysis. We looked at several alternatives for connecting the two ring levees with the blue, red and yellow lines there. The recommendation from that was to follow an existing drainage, an existing canal and spoil bank, which maintained all the existing interior drainage features and collected the drainage at several primary downfall points. For non-surge events, you know, we're proposing loose gates or gravity drainage structures so it can maintain, be maintained as an open system and then pump stations for surge condition. So the Army Corps of Engineers is also working on this. They have, you know, kind of three, a few different efforts that they're operating under. They have, you know, what they can do, what was, under what was originally authorized by the project. They have a little bit of latitude of what they can do within the chief's discretionary authority. But once they get over a certain amount of that, then they have to go into a post-authorization change. And that was something that, you know, all the parties would want, wanted to avoid because that not only impacts St. James, but St. John as well. And given that that's well into construction, nobody wanted to put the brakes on, on that. So, so as a part of that, in 2023, the Corps was looking at provided and providing an alignment, which we've been referring to as the, the EDR alignment. But it was definitely a step in the right direction. It provided a cover, it provided an alignment that was most of the, covered most of the East Bank and St. James. Shortly thereafter, the parish submitted the results of the alternatives analysis to the Corps. And then in September of last year, submitted a permit for the Connector Levy Alignment. So the EDR alignment just has a couple of minor differences really in the middle, which EDR alignment is, is highlighted in yellow there. And then the only difference being the Connector Levy portion would be following the magenta alignment. So following the submittal of the permit application last September, the parish and non-federal sponsors, CPRA, PLD and the Corps met to discuss the path forward for taking the permit application and how it could be integrated into their current plans for the rest of West Shore. So that's in December of '24, we met with the Corps and they provided us this customized flow chart diagram that they like to put together for their projects. And I guess without even really getting into the details of what's going on with it, the key part of it is that they told us if we get our permit by December of 2025, they will include it in their selected plan going forward. So that provided us an avenue to kind of get the project into West Shore. They're going to proceed and design the features that are already authorized, that are common to what we're doing. And then if they determine other features are economically justifiable, they will continue to build those as well. So this slide kind of highlights that, but the, the two authorized components are, they assigned as reaches WSLP 201 and 202 and Grand Point and Gramercy, those are in blue. The Connector Levy being in yellow and then other point on the, the figure on the right. If they determine it's, the project's economically justifiable, they can build all the features in green. So the Corps is going to be working basically on the flanks while they wait for the St. James to get their permit for the Connector Levy portion in the middle. And at the end of all that, you should, you know, we should end up with something that looks like this, where again, the red is the portion that the parish is focusing on and the green and the blue are what the Corps is looking. So this was a slide we put together to kind of illustrate and, you know, the steps to get to kind of where we are today. And you can see how the different entities are involved in the process. It started in 2021 with the parish committing their local Go Mesa money that they had bonded, provide the matching funds for the capital outlay request that they were successful in receiving in, in 2022. That allowed them to also move the H&amp;H and alternatives analysis forward. The following year, they were able to get the capital outlay request increased. The alternatives analysis and H&amp;H was used to get, provide both CPRA and PLD a plan to get additional funding for the project. CPRA contributed $6 million through an intergovernmental agreement with St. James and Ponchatrain Levy District did an additional $2 million. The, the money from Ponchatrain Levy District was used to prepare the grant application that was needed to get the $10 million that was requested for, from LWI through ARBC. So in doing that, the money from CPRA was also used, you know, we're building this project to basically be like all the core requirements and everything. So, you know, at the end of the day, they're just going to accept it as though it was done the way they did it. A big element of that is the geotechnical investigation. You know, they have very, you know, stringent requirements for that, five inch boreings. It's a very expensive and, and intensive process. But we were able to take the part of the money from CPRA, use it to complete that so we can continue to follow all the core requirements for the geotechnical investigation and complete the levy design of, of that. Additionally, doing the H&amp;H and alternatives analysis, we were able to complete the, the permit application for the Connector Levy. The funding from, from, the funding from Ponchatrain Levy District and, and LWI ARBC allowed us to move forward with the design of the Eastern Pump Station. Concurrent with that, you have the three ongoing efforts of the Corps that I mentioned, which are, you know, the, the resiliency study, which is the reevaluation of St. James. That's on a longer timeline. What they can do within what's currently authorized, which was the EDR alignment I mentioned, and then the design and construction of the authorized features, which they can basically start and do now. And the key element that ties it all together, as I said, was receipt of the Connector Levy Permit. Receipt of the Connector Levy Permit includes the project in the tentatively selected plan of the resiliency study. Doing that will get us to construction of those two phases that I mentioned. And then they can also continue to move forward with the design and construction of the authorized features and build features that are common to the Connector Levy and the EDR. A key, a key part of, you know, getting the project in the tentatively selected plan is there's a local cost share requirement, right, of, from the, from the non-federal sponsor. And once you're in the tentatively selected plan, money spent on it can count towards that match. So that's a, a key component for allowing other entities to contribute money, particularly the state, who has a, who's already has a commitment to completing it, you having their money spent and count towards the match. And then upon completion of the resiliency, the feasibility, resiliency study, which is anticipated in 2029, once that's completed, then everything can basically be built with funding being appropriated. So. And that's all to get us to the end of, you know, a comprehensive plan for St. James on the East Bank. I mean, it's, it's deliberately crowded and busy and a lot of steps involved. But, you know, really wanted to kind of capture, you know, the process to get to where we are. And a lot of this happened, you know, in the last, in the last year particularly. So. So these are the two phases, the, the levying embankment that's funded primarily through the state and the local Go Mesa money, as well as CPRA for the geotech investigation. And then the second phase, which I mentioned, was the M2 East Pump Station and Drainage Structure has the $10 million for the ARBC LW, LWI Region 9, $5 million from CPRA, 1.7 from PLD. And we're, we've got a plan to move it forward, but we're still searching for additional funding to be able to complete that project. This is kind of where we're at. As far as the Phase One, we've completed, you know, all the data collection. As of, you know, this month, we received our mitigation intent letter. So we are kind of at the finish line for DNR and the Corps for getting the permit. You know, we're getting kind of tight, but still a couple of months ahead of kind of that end of the year target that we were shooting for. So that'll be something that will be coming up, you know, in the next, next couple of months for that. But it'll cover all the mitigation for the project. And then we're working through land acquisition and progressing through design. You know, we should be completed with the design towards middle of next year. And then looking to bid advertise was starting in, you know, early '27 with structure. This is the M2 East Pump Station and Drainage Structure. Still kind of, this is the concept from the permit drawings. That's probably going to be tweaked a little bit. But that's going to be constructed to the future 2070. Design elevations will be behind Gramercy. We're just, we just, we had the kickoff meeting with OCD in April. We got the final CEA executed in June and then started on the design on that last month with an anticipated completion. And, you know, it'll be lagging about six months behind the levy project. That's all I have. Any questions?
You have any questions? Commissioner.
I said, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank the board for allowing us to come and present our project. And so we always want to continue to be completely transparent. I want to, like Mr. Webber said, I want to thank our staff and our team and also Intercoastal because it's been a lot of time, a lot of due diligence we've been putting into this project and it takes a long time to get it to fruition. So I highly encourage everyone here who's, who's got a potential project, you know, please don't sit on it because it takes a lot of time and we don't want the time to run out and the money still sitting on the table, you know, so we need to. Go ahead. No, I'm done. I'm done. That's about it. No, so that's what I was just wanting everybody to know and understand, you know, the importance of this project. And I appreciate the cooperation of everyone here and also PLD and CPRA who's been partnering and helping us get this to fruition. So thank y'all again for everything. And, and we, we have more needs than we have money. So if, if there's any opportunities where we can acquire additional funding, we still got some pump stations left that, that needs to be had. So we need to continue to all work together and get everybody's project to the, to the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dufran, Commissioner Cluett.
Yeah, I just want to expand on what Paris President Dupre said, Rick and all the staff. You guys working through the PLD, been working with you guys for years since you've been elected and, and came on the scene and Rick come on board and everything. You guys have been working so diligently and working through, working up against a lot of brick walls. And I remember years ago when the Corps of Engineers chose the path of the West Shore Ponchatrain Levy, I mean, the West Shore project, and it wasn't favorable for you guys. And there was a commitment made, that some, with some of that, because we did that on the 450 earlier this year. And I, I think, I think it's all going to come, come together.
And thank you for that. And this project seems to have gained some irreversible momentum now. So we definitely going to keep pressing forward until we get it to the finish line.
And we, we just had a change of command down at the Corps and Lionel and I, we were there and, believe me.
He's local.
Yeah. Colonel Jones, on his way out, made sure that Colonel O'Tan coming in understood the importance of these local projects. And, and our meeting last week with Colonel O'Tan, I believe he's, he's very, he and Deron and they're, they're on board. Deron, and they're, they're on board, and so, just got to keep beating it, beating it, and don't let it, and bless your soul if you go get to the end of a permit, that's always a great thing. Thank you.
Mr. Sarr, you had a comment?
Commissioners, I'm sensitive to the time, but I think it would be helpful for either Kevin or Parish President Dufran to comment on the LWI process. Is there anything that you can instruct other LWI applicants, just your experience, you know, what it's been like, you know, are there hurdles that you have to encounter, is there a lot of back and forth, you know, what are, what are some lessons learned that you could convey to other applicants that, you know, because, because your project is so far along, what, what advice or what lessons learned could you convey to other applicants, either on the commissioner or who are listening?
That's, that's real critical, Paul, I'm glad you brought that up, you know, this, these four projects that we voted on, these large transformative projects, where the $100 million was allocated to Region 9 for the most impacted and distressed area, as, as the parishes, whether it's Livingston, Ascension, Iberville, are working on these large-scale regional projects, we got to check all the boxes, and we only get one shot at this money, and some are progressing further and faster than others, but at the end of the day, we got to keep things moving, and it looks like St. James has got things going on.
So, definitely worked very closely with, with Blake on that part of it, so, I mean, if there's anything he wants to add to, I guess, what I'm going to say, certainly do that. You know, I think one of the benefits that St. James had on this particular project was, you know, when the grant applications, you know, came, when it was time to do the grant applications, I mean, we were probably, I don't know, a year, a year, year and a half into, you know, working on, through the alternatives analysis and the hydraulics and all that stuff, so it really helped having, I mean, having a huge head start on some of that, and, you know, just, okay, you, you, we had done most of this, now it's time to populate it in this application, and I felt like the application part of it wasn't, wasn't too painful because we had been working on it for a long time, and not every project's always going to have that benefit, right? I mean, but I mean, the OCD team was very, you know, helpful with us along the way, worked with Garvin on that as well, he had some very good suggestions for our approach as well as CPRA, because we were pulling in, you know, money to use from them to account as part of the, the commitment of funds that were needed to, you know, to secure the additional $10 million for the grant. So, I mean, it's definitely, I mean, repetition going through it certainly helps and, and, but I mean, having, having a good head start and having a lot of that data ahead of time, I think was really kind of benefit to the parish, so.
Commissioner Weber, anything to add?
Just one comment, when, when grants administrator Blake Russo first got on board, what I told him was, grants management is nothing more than paper, papers cheap. If one of the, one of these state or federal partners want paper, give it to them, don't be the person that's going to be holding up a project with one piece of paper. So, I'm pretty relentless when it comes to that, so, you guys stay on top of it. If you've seen that last slide that he put up on the screen, you got to watch those balls bounce, it gets complex in a hurry, so, I'm pretty relentless about it, we, we talk to each other weekly about these projects, and we make sure that we push them through, but it's paperwork, just don't be the person that, that's holding up a project waiting on one piece of paper.
Yes, I would like to expand upon that, a lot of our local viewers, just, you know, our stakeholders, people that are counting on us to, to reduce flood risk, to help address flood problems, why can't you just, why, why can't you get out there and just turn the dirt? Well, not everybody has $10 million in their pocket to go do the project, if you did, you may not have to jump through all these hoops. So, when you don't have the money, you got to jump through some hoops when you're dealing with federal and state agencies using their money, there's, there's 100 boxes you got to check, and, and it's not easy, and it, to take a project from concept to completion and all of the steps in between is where the magic is, and I commend y'all for what you're doing and not, not dropping the ball and keeping it going forward.
Thank all of you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, referring back to our agenda, under O Business, it's about Resolution 1190, Amendment Number 1. Mr. Bankston, can you expand upon what this resolution, give us a little more detail about what it's about?
This, as Paul had mentioned, this is simply to correct the, the correct name of the entity that we had previously used years ago for the, for the project, and this company is, just to make sure it's in the proper form of correcting the name.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Quintmull, second by Commissioner Parker, any opposition against making this correction to the Resolution 1190? Hearing no resolution, I mean, hearing no opposition, resolution is adopted. Moving on, under resolutions, again, we have a Resolution 1192, and it's authorizing engagement of ESA services. Any public comment on this particular resolution item? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Quintmull and a second by Commissioner Parker, any opposition to passing this resolution? Hearing no opposition, Resolution 1192 is passed. We also have Resolution 1193, it's confirmation of available matching funds for the facility planning and commission, facility planning and control, project number 50-n99-24-01. And this particular project is referring to the land acquisition in the Upper Amiet River Basin for restoration, for restoration. And any public comments on this particular resolution? Motion by Commissioner Quintmull, second by Commissioner Bailey, any opposition against Resolution 1193? Hearing none, Resolution 1193 passes. Next item on under O Business is a report about the Comete River Diversion Canal Project. Paul, I think you've covered it pretty extensively, but if you have some more comments?
No more, no additional comments unless Commissioner Moreno wants to clarify or expand?
Mr. Moreno?
I really got nothing to add.
Okay.
You did a good job on covering everything, and also the, the handout is very self-explanatory. Okay, next item under O Business is East Feliciano Police Jury Resolution Discussion. We had received a resolution that was passed by the East Feliciano Parish Police Jury, and we're here to the, to, in regards to our ARBC master plan, specifically a, a particular project that was included in our master plan for upper, for retention of floodwaters in the Upper Amiet River Basin. Do I have any comments on this, or anybody like to expand upon this? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we accept the resolution as an amendment to the master plan stating that the parish voted and with the consensus of the, of the citizens of East Feliciano Parish, that this resolution be amended to the master plan on our webpage to state that the parish was against the reservoir.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Parker and a second by Commissioner Byrd from St. Helena. Do we need a roll call on this one? Ms. Tony, can you do a roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd? Mr. Clark?
Yes, and I would like to qualify my vote. I just want to remind everybody that East Feliciano Parish, they're a government entity, they're not an NGO, they're not an activist group, they're not just a, an individual. They're part of the Amiet River Basin, they have a designated seat on our board, and they will always be represented. You should also realize that East Feliciano Parish occupies more river fringe along the Amiet River than the other parishes in the basin, so with that, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. Delight is absent. Mr. Dufran?
Ms. Falido?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell? Mr. Harris? Parker? And Mr. Rayford, I thank you, pass. Oh, thank you. I put you down, I thank you.
Let the record reflect it, let the record reflect it, Commissioner Quintmull voted yes.
I did.
All right, moving right along, under new business, we have our 2024 to 2025 audit, it's our annual Louisiana compliance questionnaire. Ms. Tony, can you expand upon that a little bit for us?
Yeah, this is a questionnaire that we answer every year as part of our audit, and once we answer it and y'all prove it, the auditor then checks it, makes sure that it's correct. So, all we need y'all to do is vote to approve it.
Any public comments on this particular agenda item? Okay, I have a, a motion by Commissioner Bailey and a second by Commissioner Quintmull, any opposition against this? Hearing none, motion passed. At this point of our meeting, if we have any public comments that were registered, we can go ahead and hear those public comments. We have any public comments? We appreciate the public for attending our meetings, and anybody that's not able to attend our meetings, you can view us on live stream at amietriverbasin.org, and obviously, Amiet River Basin has a YouTube channel, so, it's, we're, we're totally transparent, we encourage everybody, we want to bring everybody along with us, and I appreciate working with this group, and we're looking forward to do wonderful things. That said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, one last thing, hold on, hold on. Before we adjourn this meeting, I would like to allow time for our, a very special commissioner that, that has worked with us, he stood with us shoulder to shoulder, and that's Commissioner
There you go. All right, you know, I've served for 38 and a half years, working with state government on different agencies, different boards, everything from the State Insurance Commission to probation and parole, healthcare, so forth and so on. I'm past president of this commission, but there always comes a point in time when it's time to step, take a step back, so I'm pushing 38 and a half years. This is my last meeting with the ARBC commission, I've enjoyed myself, I've enjoyed working with the commission, and we've done some good things, some things that a lot of people may not be proud of, but we did what we had to do. So, again, I want to thank the commission for all the hard work and look forward to moving forward.
Any comments, Commissioner Quintmull?
Yes, well, thank you for your service, means a lot, you know, to show up here, oftentimes getting criticism from the public for the hard decisions we have to make, while the intention is always to do the right thing and the best thing when you sit up here, so, thank you for your service over, over that time. It is, it's an honor to serve with you, and I know I speak for my colleagues up here in saying that, but, but thank you, thank you for your service and your dedication, not only to ARBC, but all the other government entities you've been a part of, thank you.
My... I've been on that, served on ARBC since 2016, so it's almost nine, 10 years. So, I, I think we've done some good, some of our projects did fall to the wayside, but some of them, most of them are still in the works, so I want to thank y'all.
Okay, with that, any last words? Thank you, Commissioner Parker. One thing I'd like to say is, there's not one commissioner up here that's being paid, everybody's a volunteer, so I think it says a lot about where people stand and what they're trying to do for everyday people to try to make a difference. We've got a unique opportunity to, to work together, seven parishes, we share the same problem, and we share the same goal, and we're looking out for each other, so I just want to qualify how we're organized and what we are about, and, and it's all, all from here, it's all from here. Any more comments? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, I've got a, I've got a motion from Commissioner Harrell and a second from President Dufran. Thank you all.